... United States of America. Intervent Republic for which sentence, my nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Can anybody read the minutes?
Yeah, I went through them a little bit here. Oh, make a motion that... Last few minutes, as you read.
All in favor?
Aye.
Company, isn't it? Or a company that's called it? What is HML?
What's that? Oh, lots testing. Annual testing, I got to do. Last week, or last meeting we had it like twenty-seven dollars. And then like two days after, it sounded twenty-seven, I got that.
I hate paying that state board accounts.
I know.
Till we get them.
Yeah, we got it. Make a motion to pay the bills for September twenty-third.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Water update, Fineman and Fanyo will be in town tomorrow or Thursday to work on the water main. Should finish middle of next week.
And there has been some progress on the new water pipe this week.
Good.
Putting good in there.
Did we ever get the... What were we waiting on? Switch? Some switch?
Well, they have all the parts according to Travis. Doesn't matter. Just put it together now. We can actually see the light at the top.
Cool. We got two one-time adjustments. One for Penny Pruitt and the amount of thirty-six seventy-four. And one for Haney. Thirty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. Make a motion to give him the one-time adjustment.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I wasn't here for the meeting this morning.
Okay. I was here at the meeting and the water tower only holds two-day supply of water if electricity goes out. And so if we've got a docking station, then we could go five days. And then we could cover for at least five days or longer. If like a tornado come loose and through here like it did before, you knocked out half the town. So I'm gonna make a motion that we go ahead and get this docking station generator. And it'll run the wells and do everything that electricity would do.
You already have a generator. We don't have to buy another generator. We already got one.
No, we don't. We just need a docking station.
Yep. I'll make that motion that we get the docking station.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, it's not seven fifteen yet.
Too fast.
I'm sorry.
It's your turn now.
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta recess.
Seven fifteen.
Yeah.
Last time we ran around.
Oh, we gotta do it at a certain time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sue?
This morning, the upper gate was open and the lower gate was open. Vic was not... I wasn't here yesterday. Vic did not go back here today. And Dave explicitly said he locked both when he left.
But nothing was cut?
No.
It was unlocked?
He knows a whole bunch of trash in the clarifier. And he said there's no way it could've got there through the granting pumps.
So you're saying somebody put it in there?
Well, he had thirty thousand gallons coming into the waste land and fifty-two thousand going out. How'd he do that?
Well, who else has keys?
Well...
They make...
We didn't know any like keys except for the thing that they had.
You said trash is from a waste?
Tampons, rags, paper towels, all that stuff. Should've let them do it.
Wet wipes, stuff like that.
Anything that was...
Boy, that does weigh the bearings and everything. Stop to...
Two things I wanna do. Change locks one more time. Have me four keys be issued, period. And put the cameras up down there. But I think I broke the cameras first because I'd like to catch somebody down there. I'd like to be the old locks after a while. Hopefully we catch somebody down there.
We don't have no cameras down there.
I think we have. We can move our cameras up.
You haven't got any of those?
No.
Not yet.
Well, if you have cameras up there, I think...
Even like a deer camera.
Sure, yeah. We sure do have cameras.
What are you saying, Ronnie? You say we need new locks?
I'd say, look, first thing in the morning, change locks. Make sure they ain't no more keys made. They're George, David, Dave, and the town hall. That's it.
That should've been all that was made this time.
That's what I asked question today.
Well, we thought that's what... Were there or we don't know?
Yeah.
I have to give a key to anybody.
Could I have that? Cause I like, I almost bought one for seven bucks on Timu. You could buy an expert professional lock on. You know?
Yeah.
Don't matter how many times you change it, they're gonna get in with that.
That just looked like somebody took a truck in down there, done a very hard day with it. You're assuming like...
We need some kind of camera down there too. We need a camera down there.
I tell you, in the morning, they need to go down there, move change locks, put the cameras up.
Move cameras down there.
First thing in the morning.
We need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Perry? We need a motion for that or not?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we go in there, change the locks, and the cameras up.
I'll second it.
And make sure the top gate's shut.
Okay.
Top gate, you're talking about by the rearward tracks. You're coming in first.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Streets?
They're done past the seal. No, it's morning early on, so wait, but we got to be on the sixth.
Okay, Midwestern has been purchased by CHA. Need to sign the new consent contract? Contract? You got that?
Have you got it? Just making my copy. I thought I cleared it yours.
Nope.
Yeah. All righty. I'm gonna slow down my reading here. Okay. Next up is the fire department. Do we have any estimates on the building? Other than what we have?
I just give my opinion. This is for a building. We need to cover the paper and get it out for bid. For all we want.
You need to cover the building itself, right?
Yeah.
Anybody have any blueprints?
Basic diagram is all that's on here.
Did you get a hold of... Ronnie, did you get a hold of mortar basic?
I've been by painful phone tag, but... I'll call in, get a voice, man. Here, call in. I'll message him.
Okay.
I put an ad in the paper. Looking for volunteer firemen.
You did? You pour wood?
I did.
You did? Thank you. I was gonna bring that up. I didn't realize you already did. Thank you.
Dustin needs a radio. Where is he? Dustin needs a radio and he needs added to the alert system. I don't know how you do that. And have...
I was gonna ask him if he had a radio to give you.
We have radios down there, don't we?
And he had said I have radio because he couldn't respond, but we got the class.
How far along on your classes?
Yeah, he's in it, he needs to respond. I just opened up the internet.
Thank you.
Just, just a bit hazmat. We're going to fire one on the second.
John?
What did he say? How far along was it?
He just re...
Got the hazmat.
He just finished hazmat.
Okay.
And he's going to fire one on the second?
Okay. Okay, good. Give it down. Okay.
Question for you, Brian. Have you responded to the ISO rating?
Yes, I was gonna bring it up tonight. You guys recall back in April thirtieth, ISO's here. And in our May twelfth meeting, I informed you guys there was an issue with the training deal. And it was waiting here to respond to the letters we received, the response from ISO. I've received my letter on the eleventh. I contacted ISO on the eleventh and I contacted the county, sent the letters on the eleventh. And I got responses from both of them on the twelfth. And I responded back on the twelfth that everyone participated in the program. And me and Mike have got a Q and A scheduled with the analysis at four o'clock Friday.
Okay, in contact with the gentleman, Dale Broyles.
What's the rating gonna be?
Ten.
Is it going up to a ten?
It's not gonna go to a ten.
No. That's why we're doing it.
It will go up to a ten if we do not participate in the program.
From a six to a ten?
If we don't participate.
You gonna get all that done?
Yeah, we've got a meeting scheduled for Friday.
Yeah. It's progressing. We're doing what we're supposed to do to make it work.
Got thirty days to do it in.
We've already done it. We've already made...
Okay.
Hold over for a minute?
All right.
We have a meeting scheduled.
I just didn't wanna go to ten because it'd be about forty percent increase on everybody's insurance.
I know, it's...
Trying to stop.
You're not gonna affect my insurance, because I'm already paying it.
I know it won't affect your insurance because you're out in the country. I bet it could. But I just don't want to... I don't wanna be a ten.
Trust me, I'm aware, I'm trying, I'm doing everything I can to get it not going.
And then on the hoses, I heard they had to be done before it would be completed. And where it was possible up anyway. So I don't know. This is pretty, pretty high up, so I... That's all I'm telling you. And anybody can do them hoses. It don't have to be the fire department.
I received a letter.
It only has to be four of them, I think. Now, that's all I know.
I received a letter at town hall from Linda Stutter. And she wanted me to read this tonight. "To the Town of Gosport Board. On August first, I went to my office and Ronald Nebel was in the town's office. I told him that I was glad the fire department got their ice machine. I asked him another question and he told me he was not to talk to me about the fire department. I value our friendship and the knowledge he has of the fire department. Several weeks ago, I invited Ronald and his daughter-in-law Jamie to our board meeting. I had some concerns of how my office could help the department. I do not know why anyone would... Why anyone would have the reason why my office cannot talk to any volunteer firemen. We are still working without a signed contract and still waiting for a 2020 year-end report. It has been four years since Wayne Montgomery and Harrison Township trustees requested a year-end report of the fire department. This issue could hinder my office to continual... To continue full support of the fire department in the near future. I am so upset about this issue that I will not talk to anyone in the department except Ronald Nebel as a liaison between my office and the fire department. Since I have been in office, I have always tried to help the fire department with financial assistance. Linda Ann Stutter, Wayne Township trustee, Owen County."
I've never been asked for a report, I think not, for the township. And if they want a financial report, that would have to come from the governor.
I assume... I assume what is? That anybody can't talk to the fire department?
The reason that was brought up is because if we need to go to the township trustees or the town board for equipment or something, it needs to be an officer of the department that does that.
Who are the officers?
Me, Marcus Second, Justin's Third.
And who decides this?
The membership goes on.
Membership?
Whatever you wanna do.
I don't wanna lose you as a fireman. But I think it's time that you step down as chief.
What's the reason?
I have had several complaints, Brian, that not...
I'm asking what's the reason is.
And I'm telling you that nobody can talk to you. That you treat people with disrespect. I'm telling you. This is what I've been told.
I've never seen that out of that man or, you know, even get his brain...
You'll get a picture next chief.
We've been communicating real well here lately, trying to get the ISO taken care of so it can get on our hand. He's doing more than what we see.
But you don't see what he's doing. We get that done.
Michael's with us and I, how many times has my son go across the car?
Yeah. Insurance and...
If I was in a deal with the town, other fire chiefs, I don't talk to Ronnie. I mean, Ronnie knows what's going on. Troy knows what's going on. Too many cooks spoil the broth. You talk to too many people, you have too many different opinions. And most decisions have to be thought through. And it's difficult. Difficult for everybody. So you have to have a chain, a clear chain of command. If our department helps a Brian, Brian talks to the town board. I don't know if Brian's supposed to talk to the township trustees or not. Harrison Township just comes and goes, doesn't know what's even going on. But you have to have a clear chain of command and don't come talk to any fireman about policy. Because they may not know all the story. They may not be on here or nothing. They just don't know all this going on like I know all the story.
Oh, I understand that.
We've just had a lot of problems, okay? And we're gonna get them straightened out, one way or another, with me on this board, I'll tell you that. So I've heard a lot of complaints. And I don't like a township trustee who's paying us money to take care of them, sending a letter like this.
Okay, we had a...
And I understand the chain of command. But we've not... It's just all messed up and it's supposed to get straightened out. Because look how many... Look how many... Let me just give you, for instance, look how many firemen we got. Not very many. What, five, maybe? Three show up for a fire? Who showed up? Ronnie? Brian?
Ronnie?
Yeah, yeah. For the fire. And they all got radios. Why ain't they showing up?
That's the volunteer fire service in general. That's what they're supposed to do.
You know? You gotta have your firemen liking the chief and working for him and under him. And if they don't, nobody's gonna jump on the bandwagon. We oughta get people out of the country on it.
People skills are difficult to develop. A person that wants to have a big personal... It's hard for them to walk. Okay, the township trustee, is this Wayne Township?
She from Wayne? Yeah.
Yes.
She called my house... She called my house today. I don't know why she called my house today. I never got back to her. So I don't know what's going on in that sphere, you know? But regardless, if somebody was talking to the town, to the fire department, township trustee, the governor standing in, you have to go through the right chain of command.
Well, I say that, but then the chain of command's gotta answer in the right... Right with them, you know? Because they're paying us money. And she's gonna want things done. And I don't care what you say or anybody says, we want it done right. Because every time I've been on this board...
That's the whole point, we're trying to do things right.
Right. But how many, how many people have you got put on there? This is what I'm wanting. I want you to get them on there.
Ronnie, you ain't gonna get people volunteering or whatever because they can go right over here to the earth fire district. It's gotta have a...
I understand that too. I do understand that. But we gotta get more people. You can't fight a fire with three people.
See, you can't. But here's what a lot of people don't realize about volunteer fire service. Like, the other one volunteered retirement and they want to show up and help their community. They'll figure out all the classes they have to take, get certifications to do it, and then how to find the tags, right? So you have business meetings, you have training sessions, you have fundraisers, you have classes. Two days a week, all the way to Mitchell, for probably six hours long, if you travel a lot with class time or better.
Yeah, through the summer.
Yeah, all the way through to December, right? So now he's got family home he's gotta take care of first, right? So it's great income, it's his full-time job. He's gotta focus on that. You can't lose that to volunteer. Do you know what I'm saying? His priority has to be taking care of his family first. Like, that's what you get in today's society with the economy the way it is. It takes one more income to pay those bills, right? So all these people work multiple jobs to get by. And then they help if they can. Like, yeah, we love it, they have more help. But here's the thing, if you get help on this channel six times a year, that's six times you got help versus not getting help. There's just a lot more involved in this.
Well, I understand it. I've done this for twelve years.
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying, there's a lot more to live than just showing up and getting people to do it.
What really makes it hard is the volunteers have got to go through the same program, the pay program. And when they go through that, they're gonna go for paid positions before they're gonna volunteer for time. It's the state's fault. It's the government's fault. They are being changing. Some of the volunteers could do something a little different and what they have to go through that training for the rest of them.
You know anything about that, Terry? On the training? What they have to do before the state...
That's the state law.
Yep.
Well, the real, real thing is, is your population is how many people in this town? I'm seventy-five.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people in town older than I am.
Well, you're young here.
And that's where the problem is, you're finding out people. I was talking to Mike about the fire department. And he said, well, tell them what we said.
Oh, God, we've talked about so much stuff here lately.
Okay, I thought I was... What do we... I was in the office. Ronnie and Donny, the guy came in to pay the water bill. Young man, relatively young man. I said, are you on the fire department? No. I got this excuse, that excuse. Why this air supply is came in. Ronnie took his money out and entered. He said, are you on the fire department? You have to tell people, there's not enough around. This is protecting the family, protecting your property. But what these guys are saying is true. It's hard to get things done. And if the requirements by state, they're humorous to the individual. I don't have the answer. Nobody here has the answer. What I said. But I know the population of this town is serious. Everybody is... Is older and there's nothing I can do about it, nothing you can do about it.
How many was on the fire department when you was chief, Ronnie?
I know, that's been a long...
Fifteen and twenty? How many? Fifteen and twenty?
And how many of the fifteen and twenty showed up?
Well, you know, they always gonna show up with different things. Different time. That's why you need about twenty people.
Big change. A big change in the economy and the prices, so now they see people work multiple jobs.
We stand for two years ago to show up. In the last two years, it's worn down to three, four, five of us.
How come? Did you ask them?
They're gonna pay me the life.
That's the training. Brian, you guys...
It's a lot, they just don't have the time to walk. People, if they don't ask for having kids, they start having...
I'm retired and stuff. I got retired, that's it. I'm getting rid of that. The help, I can't do it anymore.
Yeah.
But send out applications and every other thing, so...
Does the county believe you all have a clarifier?
I got them all made.
The county doesn't let it.
We've started hiring them several times.
That's his pay.
They saw the state. And borders used to lit fire. Well, it was... That was policy here in Hammond. Really, the nine forty?
Do this for me.
Paid, but put the fire in.
Come down.
That's changed it all for work. Go by fire.
It ain't like it used to be. Now, if I'm the problem, I'll be glad to turn my shit in, Brian.
Well, you heard what Linda had to say.
I understand you are that thorough. Tell Brian, tell you guys, if I'm the problem, I'll be glad to turn in. If you definitely turn my stuff in, I'll be glad to do this.
I told Mike this morning, put something in the water bill, put something in the post office.
Yeah, she's advertising.
That's what you gotta do. Most people don't know that's what you...
Do we have an assistant chief? Right there. Okay, when you ain't around, is he around?
He's not at work.
Well, I mean, of course it works, but somebody could go to him, right?
Yeah, they can go to any officer.
I ask everybody who comes in and pays the water bill. I know. You were in there the other day and then your guy came in, just lived into town. Young guy. And you asked him. I got applications at the office that I hand out to people.
I gave that, I don't know why his name is, but the kid at the bakery, bakery. I gave him an application over a month ago and I've never seen anything like it.
You know, years back, at the hardware place with the injunction, he supported the fire department quite a bit. I was curious if somebody can contact him or contact, laugh in the town. As far as one of the guys' houses, they're in fact working. They might go to favorite house. And maybe they work out a deal, say, hey, if the alarm goes off here, they're not that pressed for work. You know, and maybe they can't off. It's just hard to walk with a job when you're working, you volunteer. Everybody knows that.
Well, the big problem is, the state's got us, got us a lot of balls. That's the part is. You gotta go through them classes, as Brian says, you gotta go through them classes on the state. If you go through the classes, what would you do? If you went through the classes, I'd say, hey, I can get paid far, far, paid job for sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year. Why should I go volunteer my time? Nothing.
That's what happens a lot. Volunteer department takes this justice.
I'm saying a lot of these... I'm saying a lot of these here.
Well, that's happened right here with the nine forty's. We have two sprint. We get the address or something, go work somewhere else. So I don't have the answer to that. I don't have it.
I guess the answer would be we need a bunch of robots.
Well, that would be good.
That would be good, wouldn't it? I don't know what else to do.
So I do or I should do?
Okay, and that's good. I appreciate it. I appreciate what these guys back there do. I just want... I just don't want so many people coming at me. You know?
We need to do something.
We need to do something.
Okay, we need to do something. Words, right, wrong, or indifferent. But we will do something. So Brian, go ahead and get us that insurance down. Okay?
We're working on it. We gotta leave the traffic.
Because if everything's done, it should go back to six. Because if everything's done, it should go back to six, should it?
It's still a six, it never left. It's been a six. Somebody's spreading rumors. It's not a ten. It's never been a ten.
It could be a ten.
It's a six. It is a six, it'll stay a six as long as we do what we're supposed to do.
It'll be a ten.
It's not gonna be a ten.
Well, it may not be.
You guys keep spreading rumors. It is not true.
I'm not spreading a rumor. I'm seeing what can happen.
But it's not a ten. Somebody's going around saying it's a ten now. It is not a ten. I'm tired of this. I heard about this yesterday from outside of town. Why? Sorry, I'm yelling.
It's not my rumor.
I don't wanna yell. My apologies.
Well, what?
But it could go up if, if you don't get it done.
Communities need to provide a letter of intent to participate in the retrogression within thirty days of receipt of their initial retrogression letter. I got this letter on September fourth, well, that's when it was dated. So we've got until October fourth.
We received the letter on the twelfth, and I sent them an email on the, or on the eleventh, we got the letters. I emailed them on the twelfth and put, just to be a program. And they've contacted me and Mike, uh, what, earlier last week or late last week. And we've got a meeting this Friday. And I'm gonna find out in this meeting what we're gonna do next. So we've been working on this since the day I forgot the letter.
And you got it all done?
Yeah, we're waiting. So with this meeting, we've got Friday. You see what our next step is? I mean, you guys think I don't do nothing, but I bust my ass to this park. I bust my ass to this town, and I watch out for liability for people in this town and the people in the community. And you guys treat me like I'm a piece of shit. I don't appreciate it from any of us. None of us in the community think that Mike is the only one that has offered to talk to me or listen to anything I say. I told Marion, I texted Marion, she's ignored my texts, she's ignored my phone calls. I don't know what I'm supposed to do.
I ain't got nothing against you, Brian. I just wanna get.
Obviously, you do.
Just keep, no, I don't. I just get a lot of feedback that other people, and I don't know whether right or wrong.
Where's my text messages with you? Where I have answered you back? Okay?
I do. There's no motion, motion on the floor.
Let's move on.
We're fifteen minutes past the time when we should recess to the budget meeting.
Motion to take a recess break for the seven fifteen or for the budget adoption. Just before, please. Ordinance resolution number twenty twenty-five budget dash oh-one. Be it ordained, resolved by the Gosport Civil Town before the expenses of Gosport Civil Town for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing, govern the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year, unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Gosport Civil Town, the property tax levies and property tax rates as herein specified are included herein. Budget form four dash B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Gosport Civil Town. Name of adopting entity, physical body, Gosport Civil Town. Type of adopting entity, physical body, town council. Date of adoption, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. The general sum, it's two hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars. That's the adopted budget. Adopted, adopted tax levy, fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighteen. Adopted tax rate at zero point two-three-two-one. Local road and street. This has been adjusted by six hundred and seventy-five dollars, so that would be ten thousand, two hundred and twenty-five?
Eight hundred and twenty-five.
Eight hundred and twenty-five. Ten thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero point zero, 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 zero. Motor vehicle highway has been adjusted by four thousand and sixty-eight dollars. The adopted budget, one hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. Adopted tax levy, fifty-one thousand. Adopted tax rate, zero point two-two-eight-zero. Cumulative capital cigarette tax. Adopted budget, zero. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero point zero, 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 zero. Adopted budget at three hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars. The adopted tax levy at one thousand, two hundred, one hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars at an adopted tax rate of zero point four-six-zero-one.
Motion, we go back?
Can we go back?
Right, that was it?
Was it?
We don't have, there's nothing to hold on, right, because this is it? What do we hold on this?
Make a motion to pass it.
We make a motion to pass it? Make a motion to pass the budget?
All of six of it?
All in favor? All right, we gotta set up trick or treat hours.
We need to, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Join this meeting.
Oh, we're gonna join this meeting and we'll back to the other meeting. Need to set up trick or treat hours. It's on a Friday.
Six to eight.
We had it six to eight last year. Six to eight. Make a motion to set it at six to eight.
Is that on October thirty?
October thirty-first.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Joe Miller?
Yes, just would like to have a follow-up. I'm Joe Miller. I'm in property at point eighteen West North Street. Talking about property, burnt out. West North Street, would like an update. I've been in contact with the board for almost two years now. And had various, all changed since first conversation. Would like to know what the update is, please.
Uh, thank you for coming, Mr. Miller. Since the last time we talked, I went back and researched how I've been after Mr. Kirby. And, uh, and had been sending him letters, notices, the last of which was in March of twenty twenty-four. Uh, resumed doing, sending him notices earlier this year, but I made a determination that he wasn't responding to my correspondence in twenty twenty-four. So I went ahead and sued him. I calculated the fines for, since March of twenty twenty-four at the statutory rate and found that as of the time that we filed the lawsuit, which was about three weeks ago, it's about, about ten days after you were in here the last time, that I sued him for nine thousand dollars in fines uh, since the, for, for ignoring us. Um, the court in that case had originally scheduled a hearing for tomorrow to, um, to get approval for the town to go onto the site to get that approved. Sheriff's Department dropped the ball. It did not serve Mr. Kirby with notice. I got notice a little while ago that the court's rescheduled the hearing for November the third. Uh, what I have done is I have been in touch now by telephone with Mr. Kirby on two different occasions. Cordial conversation, and he told me that under the circumstances, he would be willing to deed the property over to the town of Gosport, which I reported to the board at the last meeting. I subsequently prepared a quitclaim deed to do that. And now I've had, over the course of the last seven days, at least five calls to Mr. Kirby to come and meet with him to get him to sign the deed, and he refuses to return my call. So, um, one thing right after the other, and quite honestly, I can't get cooperation from the county sheriff's department in terms of serving notices. I don't have a town marshal to accompany me up to his house. He's a former veteran who's not in very good health. And not, and I'm not inclined to get shot serving the paperwork myself right now. So I'm hoping I send him out another copy of the lawsuit today with a seven, with a nine thousand dollar demand. And hopefully that gets his attention again. As soon as he says, I'm here now, bring the papers, I will leave my office in Bloomington, and I will come immediately to get him to sign us. So that's, that's where we are. We're not ignoring you. Um, and if you choose to, I can give you the case number of the court case there in, in Owen County Circuit, Owen County Circuit two. So you can just check to make sure.
That's not necessary.
That's fine.
That's not necessary.
So.
Just, uh, just a couple of follow-up questions if you don't mind.
Sure.
Uh, on the November, what happens if they cannot serve him in?
Well, he's, he's gonna get, he's going to get served one way or the other. Under normal circumstances, uh, I file a lawsuit against somebody. I can either have the paper served by sheriff or I can send them by certified mail. Since we have, he has a post office box, it's difficult to get him to serve by certified mail. So then I have to go through the sheriff's department. I personally took the paperwork to the sheriff's department ten days ago to serve him, and I checked this morning, no, nothing. So that's when I contacted the court, and the court suggested going ahead and resetting it. I don't have any problems as long as, um, I can be armed.
I certainly don't want you to make, just have to serve. I think there's.
No, I, you know. That's what we elected the sheriff for.
I'm a proponent of the Second Amendment too, but.
I'd be taken over there. I didn't feel welcome in this one.
He needs to stay out of it. I told Troy he needs to stay out of it.
I don't, I don't care how we get it served, but I, 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 I do think.
You need a down car.
After, huh?
You need a down car.
After, after my, my conversations with him, which were very cordial, I told him my, my son was a disabled veteran as well. We had a very good conversation. He said, I'm not ignoring you, I'm just old and I'm tired and I'm sick, and I can't do it. And I believe that. So now it's just a matter, I'll call him every single day. And he has an interesting voicemail. Answers and goes, hello, hello? Hello? And he says, I'm not here. So after the first hello, I said, hi, this is Terry English. Hello? So we continue with this conversation. So, so the long and the short of it is, we, we want it taken care of. If we can get him to quitclaim it over to us, we're ready to move on that as soon as, as soon as we have that done. And then we would own the property, and then we would have to decide what we're going to do with it. I think the church is probably inclined to, to, to do something in terms of that, because it's right on their border, but we'll.
Two churches there.
We'll, we'll figure it out, uh, but again.
All I'm concerned about is getting it cleaned up.
So are we.
That's all I'm concerned about.
So are we. All right, I just.
Well, I appreciate the sense of urgency since the last time I was here, because I was very frustrated to do.
Well, you were, and quite honestly, I was frustrated because I, I had recalled that I had started the process in twenty twenty-four, and he ignored me then. And so I immediately went and filed the lawsuit after that. I didn't bother to serve him, send him another, another letter. I just went ahead and filed a lawsuit.
Why don't you send him a letter saying he's one of the states to get up at the post office, to, to, to.
Are, are we gonna do a sting to get him to, to come out of his house to, to do it?
Maybe you shouldn't vote for the sheriff next time the election comes up. Let, let's like run a native campaign.
Is that one of the more murder possibilities, is it sort of favors?
It is, and, um, it is.
Well, I, I vote for a placard on everybody's window that says, get the sheriff out of town.
I appreciate it. I do appreciate everything you've done.
Well, it would help if you got a down car.
I would tend to agree with that, but that's.
That would help a lot of other issues as well.
So that, that, that's the update, and you're welcome to call me, but I will, I'll call him every day until he either returns my call or one of us passes.
Well, you know, I have your phone number, so I will give you a call and ride a rat on it.
I, I, I answer my phone.
Yes, you do. Every time I call.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, uh.
I'm sorry.
It's all right. I was here a couple weeks ago for this, for about this, if you were okay with it. Since that time, we found out that one of them is over ten foot deep and around that, which gave massive explosion. We won't take that off the table. We just wanna go into the each one, which we don't wanna keep it in, but it can't be that deep.
Uh, one of us had gotten that night. On that, I thought you was gonna do something on your property. I didn't know you was doing it on Luxus.
Tell you what, just go go on Luxus property. If you use my location, then I'll take it from the property line in. You just go down there, put a riser on it, cap it, and we'll go from there.
Say it. He said you're going into that red green bomb as a tiny house.
The red with the green roof. That's correct. That's what I'm running down to the store line.
And I said, I had, I had went and talked to the board, and the board got that. I approved it before I do anything during the day.
I said, I got no problem. I just wanna see that as head and head direction.
So.
So if you find it, if you find it right, find it, then work everything out.
So it's up to the board to.
Here's the thing with me and that property, and I don't know if anybody agrees with me. Those tiny homes should not be in Gosport.
That, okay, now understand something. I don't know anything about it. I know nothing about that. All I know is the town started the process. By putting a water meter in, and it stopped for some reason.
How many water meters though?
There's one water meter saying unused on Seventh Street. Now, I don't know when that was done. It would've been done for free. They had to write somebody a check. But regardless, somebody started the process, and for some reason, equipment failure, who knows, it stopped. I wanna finish the process that was started.
That was before my time.
That was before my time, yeah.
Well, I fear. Do you pay for your water?
Do what?
Do you pay for your water?
Hey, but see, there's no, see, that's what I'm saying. It's so confusing. There's been controversy over, so apparently, somebody said, put a water meter in for me, I'll do this. Of course, I wasn't there. The water meter was put in place.
One meter.
Well, there's two meters on the property, but the meter I'm talking about is on Seventh Street, down near the lift station. That's what I'm talking about. You put the water meter in, and for whatever reason, you can have personnel changes, equipment failures, it stopped. And for whatever reason, it wasn't picked back up.
So I meter in, nothing, it's just there.
It's there, it's hooked up onto the town. They hooked it.
And then you say. And cut it.
It's not ready to run down there. And I'm not gonna run the water, I'm not running water unless I got a way to get it off the property. So some, they got dropped someplace in the cracks. I'm not sure how good. You would put a water meter in there unless you planned on looking it up.
My thing is, there's how many of those little houses there?
There's so many of those houses there is.
It does, Mike, because we don't have water meters on each one of them.
No, that and like, it's occupied.
And they're occupied.
You can build a structure, you can make a Barbie house in your backyard, looks like Barbie's house. And if it all just looks like Barbie's house, it just looks like Barbie's house.
You know, storage sheds, that's okay.
I understand that.
Yeah, tiny, tiny homes is a different story.
You don't wanna say it.
These are not storage ones, yeah.
People are actually.
Okay, let me throw a little shit on this. They had a, a, a shovel run in the other day. Cargo shuttle, or they call it.
Storage container.
And I told them where I would put it at, and you know, they listened to me. And I was told that, well, people are moving into it. So, you know, it's a steel show, getting these torches and. So, you know, I mean, it's a steel show, you get these torches and all this other stuff to do that. You just talk earlier about people saying things that's not true or just guessing at things.
Right.
Let's not guess at it. If, if somebody's breaking an ordinance, do something to them. I got no problem, put them in prison, I don't give a shit. You know, but live, give them the opportunity to break the ordinance. And you cannot convict somebody of thinking about doing something. You can say anything, you won't add somebody who wants to stop by there, just reaming me because you don't like something, or I don't care what you don't like. If they're not violating the law, leave them alone. That's the way I look at it.
So if they hear me go break it, go down here and dig it, how many?
Yeah, I got, I got my back to center right now, they're here for, for a week.
How come they put a meter in there anyway?
Somebody's got it, yeah.
I'm saying locate. I didn't tell you, hurt nothing up.
Not connecting anything.
Locate. If it's, if it's twelve foot deep, it ain't gonna work. If it's two foot deep, it ain't gonna work. I have to be able to do the math. And to relocate it, I can't do nothing, and I'm not, I'm not gonna do nothing. You know? Just locate where it's at, how deep it is, then you make, then you make your call.
What's your thoughts, Ron?
It's up to you guys, you guys can't really dig it, locate it, more digging and locating?
And, and.
It's, it's up to you guys to decide if you're willing to hook it through or not hook it through.
That's the way I look at it.
Right.
And we're be flexible about it, there's trees there, there's roots there, things on the lake. So it's, it's gonna be a very affluent situation, the way I look at it.
I believe there has to be an address attached to an account, so.
Do you want the address attached to the meter, the water meter?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, I believe that's, that's on, right, it's an address.
You can just have the mailing address to where, where the water bill goes, but one of the issues here, it should have been started out as an application to hook onto the service. The fee for hooking on the service is a thousand dollars.
Right.
That'd be backed up six years, or seven years. We had a town employee that Mr. Lutz paid a thousand dollars to hook up. And the town employee refused to run a service line down to the lift station, I think we're talking about. He wanted to have Mr. Lutz put in a lift station and force it to Main Street sewer line. So why would our town employee try to force Mr. Lutz into putting in a lift station, a small lift station, to pump his septic to Main Street when it could gravity flow back to the lift station, basically? So it sat there for years, I don't know if I still have the check, I, I don't, I'll look in the cash box to see if I still have the check, but he.
Like an uncashed check?
Yes, he paid a thousand dollars to hook on, and I didn't cash the check because he never got hooked on. And at that point in time, the town council, which none of you three were involved, but they should have told the town employee, you dig a service line back to the lift station that we're talking about, run it up to his property, and then it's up to him to run it over to hook up to our lab. But that wasn't the way it was done, and it was just forgotten about. But that brings us to another question. The barn back there, it's converted to a, a house or apartment, whatever you wanna call it.
I would call it that, but I call it a mini house, what I call it.
Okay, I'm talking about the big barn.
The big garage.
The machine shop?
The white block building?
The white block building used to be a machine shop, that's.
Years ago.
Years ago.
But it's been transferred.
For my time.
It's been transferred to a living quarter.
There's a apartment on the second floor.
That's for sure.
Yeah.
So where'd they get the water, where does their sewage go?
That is, okay, that's, that's a perfect question, you should know what's going on about all this stuff, you know? Uh, but on my property, so don't come lock me out of my property. But on my property, at Doris May's house, Donnie had a shop in the garage. Donnie had a toilet in the garage, in the sink or whatever, and he had water in the garage. All that jumped off Doris's house. The water meter in front of that house, I thought fed the garage, it doesn't. It fed to Kay's house over there. Now, why all this is done, we don't know. We don't say anything malicious or hateful, it's just, it's it when you're, look at it fifteen years later. I wanna find the sewer line, and I wanna get this one thing done. I have worked on the lift station in that basement twice. You like working the lift stations? Man, do you like working the lift stations? Nobody like working on the lift stations. It's nasty, ugly work. So if you're gonna eliminate a lift station, why not? But nature will take care of it. I don't understand it.
So they're gonna do a lift station and wanna run it out to Seventh Street and stuff?
What's going on right now, is I'm putting a sewer line in to Roger's mini house. That's what I'm doing. And there's a lift station in the machine shop. That lift station goes into the house. But it shouldn't go into the house, because the, the waste is on the second floor, not in the basement. Lift station's in the basement. Why they didn't run it, why they didn't run it to Main Street, I don't know. That was nineteen seventy. I don't know why it's done that way. But it always, it always used to rap with it. Like he said, man paid money to have it hooked up, for whatever reason, somebody decided they didn't wanna hook it up. They shouldn't, they're allowed to do that, and he's already paid his money, he's got the check, he's sending.
I had the check, that was five or six years ago.
Yeah, so, you know, I also, all I know is I wanna find the pipe.
Make a motion to help Mike find the pipe.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go, find the pipe.
Yeah, that's what we, we wanna find it, do the math.
Find the pipe.
I'm not gonna go with that, so we're gonna find the pipe.
Have a chat, I'll give you a call, eight-one-one, give a location.
All right, hopefully, eight-one-one. I've already called them, and they, they cannot check it. But it may, let me check to see when it expires, because it may be expired by now, that's.
Maybe get a warrant and everything, and as soon as they get a warrant, I'll, I'll, I'll start digging.
He already had a cocaine on the property, he wanted to knock it in here.
It's up to you guys, you guys wanna do it, I'll do it.
Do it.
I think we've already adjourned.
Yeah, I think so too.
We already adjourned, yeah.
Thank you.